I'm here. Okay.
Oh, promote to panelists. Okay, and now you're good. Okay. We got your counselor.
Go on this page. Okay, get me come in.
Okay, you're in.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Hello?
Hey Brenda. Counselor Pelham.
Hello? Hello?
I can hear you, Counselor Pelham.
Okay, great. Okay. Maybe they can't too.
They may have you muted.
Yeah.
They may have both for us muted. Oh, okay. Alright.
For daily pictures. But center always. Is it a double four?
Alright, we're gonna go ahead and call the meeting to order. Roll call please.
Mayor Parton.
Here.
Sorry about that. Mayor Parton.
Here.
Vice Mayor Gore.
Here.
Counselor Joyner.
Here.
Counselor Harris.
Here.
Counselor Denton.
Here.
Counselor Pelham.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Okay. Alright, at this time is there a motion to allow Counselor Harris and Counselor Pelham into closed session?
Some way.
Okay, motion's been made by Counselor Denton and seconded by Vice Mayor Gore. Counselor Pelham, at this time can you state where you're conducting the meeting from and the purpose you are requesting to participate remotely?
Yes, I'm in my home in Ward 6 and for medical reasons.
Okay. Mr. Harris, the same?
I'm conducting the meeting from my home also for medical reasons.
Okay. Alright, is there any discussion? Seeing no lights, roll call please.
Counselor Holloway. Counselor Joyner.
Yes.
Counselor Harris.
Yes.
Mayor Parton.
Uh, yeah, that's okay, just, but yes.
Vice Mayor Gore.
Yes.
Counselor Denton.
Yes.
Motion passes five to zero.
Four to zero.
Four to zero, sorry.
Alright, at this time is there a motion to go into closed meeting pursuant to Virginia Code Section 2.2-3711A1 to discuss and consider personnel matters including board and commission appointments, the assignment and performance of specific appointees and employees of city council, and Virginia Code Section 2.2-3711A29 for discussion of the award of a public contract involving the expenditure of public funds including interviews of bidders, offers, and discussion of the terms or scope of such contract where a discussion in an open session would adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiating strategy of a public body and to the extent such discussion will be aided thereby.
So move. Second.
Okay, motion's been made by Counselor Denton and seconded by Vice Mayor Gore. Is there any discussion? Seeing no lights, roll call please.
Counselor Joyner.
Yes.
Counselor Harris.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Parton.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Gore.
Yes.
Counselor Denton.
Yes.
Counselor Pelham.
Yes.
Motion passes six to zero.
Okay.
And what's that guy, if he want us to go out and then come back in?
Yeah, come into the closed session link.
We don't have a closed session link.
He said, I think he said close out and then sign back in, the same link, and he'll pull us back up.
When you do the, I have a little louder in that mic so I can hear. Oh, I work. I don't know what's going on.
Um.
Hold on, let me see what they mean. It wasn't formed, the whole word itself was more than four. So happy. But everything looked like one. It's okay. No, Austin's going square. So I think. Just assume that's here. It's going square. Do what?
Yeah, thank you for favoring.
Oh, okay.
Okay, so they're gonna, once everybody gets back there, they get everybody on the Zoom link that's supposed to be on Zoom. They'll talk for about five minutes and then I will let them know that you're here to be called back for your interview.
If it's not pregnant, I'll pregnant that before I. Okay. So you don't like her.
I definitely called you Susan and they wanted to know who Susan was and then they let me know it was Miss Sophie.
Can you call Austin? You know, still calling him. So I didn't have to get it. What's wrong? I'm trying to keep bringing in. The other two, Mr. Harris and Ms. Posnell.
Cause they were supposed to log out of here and just click on that, click on the link. Hey, Harris and Pelham, I guess I had some hard time logging back into the closed session. When they logged out, they were supposed to click on the same link and they're not being brought into the, so.
They are not there, but look, Holloway is.
Cause it's the same, I'm gonna just call, okay, Keith, come up here, but I'm gonna call Counselor Harris and see what there is you wanna try to get on there. Alright. Cause all they were supposed to do was log out and then click on that link again. They should've brought him back there.
You have to set up two Zooms. One says IT up here and.
Can you click on that same link that was sent to you? It's buffering, wait on it to let him in.
That's cause they're not clicking on the right one.
You click on the same one that you click on to get into the open session, right? From Austin, not from me. So click on, the only one that you need to click on now, ignore the one that I sent you. Click on the one that Austin sent you recently, the one that put you into the open session. So click back on that link, your most recent Zoom link that you have in your email. Yeah, click on that one again.
You telling us the original link?
He said, the one that said open session.
Now that's the IT one.
Oh, I didn't know that, Austin. Okay, Counselor Harris.
Click on the link that changed. Yes.
We want for everybody. Cause that's originally and we're not early up today. When you sit in the first.
Same thing with my mom.
I told him to a door, but he clicked on the wrong button.
Which one is on the back?
Yes, Counselor.
Okay, you want, okay, so Counselor Harris, is he on?
Yeah, Mr. Harris.
Okay, now you gotta call his cell.
Okay, alright, let me. Okay, all right, let me.
Of closed meeting, is there a motion to come out of closed session?
So moved.
Second.
Alright, motion's been made by Counselor Denton, seconded by Counselor Joyner. Is there any discussion? Seeing no lights, roll call please.
Counselor Holloway. Counselor Joyner.
Yes.
Counselor. Mayor Parton.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Gore.
Counselor Denton.
Yes.
Alright, can I get the certification please?
Certification pursuant to Virginia Code 2.2-3712D where only business, public business matters, one lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements and two identified in closed meeting, motion discussed in closed meeting. Counselor Joyner.
Yes.
Mayor Parton.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Gore.
Yes.
Counselor Harris.
Yes.
Counselor Denton.
Yes.
Uh, they are trying to connect.
Counselor Holloway.
Here.
Yes, yes.
Here. Yes.
Motion passes.
Yes. Motion passes.
Okay, alright, at this time, is there a motion to allow Counselor Holloway to participate remotely?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, motion's been made by Counselor, or excuse me, Vice Mayor Gore, seconded by Counselor Joyner. Is there any discussion? Uh, seeing no lights, Counselor Holloway, for the record, can you state where you're conducting the meeting from? And the reason you are asking to participate remotely?
Uh, Tressett, it is medical center, family emergency.
Okay. Alright, seeing no lights, roll call please.
Counselor Joyner.
Yes.
Mayor Parton.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Gore.
Yes.
Counselor Denton.
Yes.
Motion passes four to zero.
Okay, is there a motion to-
You have to call us too, don't you, oh no you don't, nevermind.
Is there a motion to appoint Mr. James Harlow to the Hopewell Water Renewal Commission?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, motion's been made by Counselor Joyner and seconded by Counselor Denton. Is there any discussion? Seeing no lights, roll call please.
Mayor Parton.
Yes.
Counselor Holloway.
Yes.
Counselor Joyner.
Yes.
Counselor Harris.
Here.
Vice Mayor Gore.
Yes.
Counselor Denton.
Yes.
Counselor Pelham.
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Alright, we will go ahead and call the regular meeting to order. Can I have a roll call please?
Mayor Parton.
Here.
Vice Mayor Gore.
Here.
Counselor Joyner.
Here.
Counselor Harris.
Here.
Counselor Denton.
Here.
Counselor Pelham.
Here.
Counselor Holloway.
Here.
Alright, we will go ahead and have our opening prayer by Reverend Blow, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag by Vice Mayor Gore. Please rise.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we want to say thank you, Lord, for blessing us to see this day. We ask you, Lord God, to have your way in this meeting. Father, we lift up the city council to you today and ask you, Lord God, to lead and guide them by your spirit. Father, you said if we would acknowledge you in all our ways, you would direct our path. So, Lord God, they are leaning on you to give them direction. Father, we ask you to have your way. You said let your will be done on earth as it is in heaven. So, Father, we just want to just say thank you for all that you're doing today in this meeting. Let us be on one accord with one mind to do what's best for this city. We bless you for all that you do and all that you have done. In Jesus' precious name, we pray. Amen.
Amen.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, is there a motion to adopt the regular meeting agenda?
So moved.
A second.
Uh, motion's been made by Counselor Denton, seconded by Counselor Joyner. Is there any discussion? Seeing no lights, roll call please.
Counselor Holloway.
Yes.
Counselor Joyner.
Yes.
Counselor Harris.
Yes.
Mayor Parton.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Gore.
Yes.
Counselor Denton.
Yes.
Counselor Pelham.
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Okay, is there a motion to adopt the regular meeting agenda?
So moved.
Excuse me, consent agenda.
So moved.
Uh, seconded.
Okay.
Uh, motion's been made by Counselor Denton and seconded by myself. Is there any discussion? Seeing no lights, roll call please.
Counselor Holloway.
Couldn't I hear, can you restate it?
Yes, the motion is to adopt the consent agenda.
Yes.
Counselor Joyner.
Yes.
Counselor Harris.
Yes.
Mayor Parton.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Gore.
Yes.
Counselor Denton.
Yes.
Counselor Pelham.
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Okay, moving on to the finance report, Mr. Bob's group.
Alright, I'm gonna do a better job of speaking into this microphone today, so let me know if you can't hear me, okay? Alright, so, big report today. Uh, we will go through progress and recent success, and then we will go through a bit of a list of items needing attention from you all. Um, I want to check, do you have, do they have the updated presentation?
The one you sent today, yes.
Okay, good. Um, I just want to make sure those on the phone have it. Alright, let's talk a little bit through recent progress. Um, this is the summary slide of what I'm about to show you. The next slide is going to show you actually, we thought we'd like, you know, by year, by reconciliation, where we are and what has gone over to the auditor. Um, the reason for this is while the external auditor's progress has been slowed based on what's going on with the treasurer, as well as just the manual nature of it being the first year of something that can be a bind upon, um, we are still moving with our work, and so it became clear to me that- we are still moving with our work, and so it became clear to me that we need to start reporting things separately, so that you understand where we are versus where the external auditor is. Essentially, nineteen and twenty have been done and submitted, we are working through those. Just to refresh everyone's memory, for nineteen, we had to redo nineteen to get twenty clean, so while we're on the hook only for twenty, we did both, uh, building from bank statements on up, so that we could get a clean opinion for twenty. So they are going through that as well. Uh, they've got those, we have also uploaded certain reconciliations that have been completed for twenty-one through twenty-three. They aren't working on those, and we have stopped and we have started holding things based on two things. One, we're concerned until the research is done regarding the issues with the treasurer, um, that we may have to restate, or redo some work, and two, based on what the external auditor says from, um, the 2020 audit, we want to make sure everything is there as they need it. So if there's things that we can do to make things on their side faster, we're gonna want to do that for twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-three, and twenty-four. So, we are slightly on hold. We are meeting, also to refresh everyone's memory, we're meeting with them every Thursday. So, we're having a very active back and forth with the external auditors, as they're asking for stuff, we're re-providing items. Alright, now this is to show you where we are on our reconciliations, so even though they've only got officially items through twenty, we have completed from the first original contract, all real estate taxes through twenty-three, personal property taxes through twenty-three, accounts payable through twenty-three, and debt services for post, the enterprise and schools through twenty-three. We are almost done with fixed assets through twenty-three, we're actually supposed to be done with that next week. So that is moving, and just a quick note here, I am going to go ahead and start adding twenty-four to the next time I come and talk with you, which I think is the second week in, uh, June. So you'll see that, this is where the, um, everything meets the road here. We are also done with, um, the bank reconciliations through fiscal year twenty-one. Again, that's to show that everything, with the exception of that fixed assets up here, is done through twenty-one, so twenty-one is mostly ready to go over. We have completed a handful of, for twenty-two, the bank reconciliations, and we're scheduled for June to complete twenty-three. So that's where everything is, from our perspective, ready to go over, so that you are aware how far along we actually are, even though it's not officially over to the auditors yet, as I said, we're gonna wait. Any questions on that before I move forward into SOPs?
Uh, seeing no lights, does anyone online have any questions? Oh, uh, Counsel Joyner?
Yeah, I just have, so, um, I know there'll be a, a change, do you all have an estimated timeline? I know probably you, you know, when, when will we be, um, you know, when, when are we gonna have everything done so that we are, you know, have our first on-time, clean audit? When is that going to be?
Unfortunately, I can't answer that.
Okay.
That's a Robinson Farmer Cox question.
Yeah.
Yeah, we haven't been able to get a full timeline, and I know Dr. Mankor's also reached out, and she has not gotten a full timeline either. What we're hearing from the external auditors is that they're doing everything they can to get things done as fast as possible. Um, but, given that they're independent, there's only so much we can do.
Right, right, okay.
So, um, all we can do is be responsive to their questions, and we're turning those things over within a week of their answer.
And I also have a question with regard to that, because, and I know, maybe we're, maybe we have to stay with this one particular firm, but given the fact that they are so slow, is there any merit to looking to another firm? Or, or given our situation, are they just gonna run?
Uh, that is a good question.
Uh-huh.
And not one that I'm sure I can answer on the books.
Okay.
I will say, our guidance has, given that they have been your auditors for a while, and they are most of the way through with twenty, I would let them go through twenty, and then have a discussion with them about, because right now, we're cleaning up the process done twenty.
Sure.
And so if they've reached a methodology, which is what's causing the time, and they are using now that new methodology for twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four, we can blow through.
Right.
But, it depends on where we end up for twenty, which is why we're holding everything I just went through.
Yeah, yeah, I understand, okay.
For twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-three, so we could be giving them twenty-two, probably the end of next, like twenty-one and twenty-two next week, but we're not going to, because we want to wait to see how they respond.
Exactly, exactly, I understand, okay, right, thank you.
Okay, anyone online have any questions? Okay, here and none?
Keep going.
Yep.
Alright, SOPs. So, good news, anything that we saw in draft of the last report is no longer, well, anything that we saw is not started, is no longer not started, everything's been started, and actually, everything's, I think, out of draft and in review. Uh, we have been on site, uh, I guess twice since the last time I've come to present, once, two weeks ago, and then, um, we're here, you can see Christine Lys here now. Uh, they've been here since early Monday morning, they will be here through Friday night. Uh, we've been really focusing on the treasurer processes this week, although we've done some EMS, keep me honest here, where else are we working?
EMS or?
EMS and, uh, revenue, commission the revenue.
So far, we've also, we're also meeting with, um, real estate this week.
And real estate.
And asset forfeiture.
And then asset forfeiture, so that's what we're working through this week, again, those have been drafted, we're now going through the review process. Everyone who's involved needs to sign off on the procedure, because it's future state procedure, so some of these things are net new.
Okay.
Okay. The other thing we're doing, um, as you know, we're also contracted to work on the repository framework, uh, we are working through that structure right now. We are also, as SOPs are done, we start working through development of training for those SOPs. So, you know, standard operating procedures can be thirty, forty, fifty pages, so they have to be condensed to, um, easily to absorb training, so that's what's happening right now on PowerPoint. Alright, the details on your next couple slides, if you want to know where everything is, all the narratives are finalized, the majority of both, uh, the Word documents and the Visio flowcharts that attach the Word documents are in review. There's multiple stages of review, prior to final, there's a first review, a second review, and a final review. The reason why is it's sort of iterative, so we get a current state in the first review, we then improve it, and then we have a final review. So that is where everything is. Any questions on SOPs? Alright, I see everyone nodding. So, alright, and next up, the ERP consultant update. If you listen to nothing that I have said, or will say, for the ERP consultant update, the most important thing I want to, you know, underline here, is that participation from the city is necessary before we go live in July. We have had numerous canceled meetings, delayed meetings, uh, we have an employee going out on training, we have the treasurer who's going to be unavailable, parts of the treasurer's office that are going to be unavailable, right, prior to go live. We have underscored this with Dr. Mankor, and I know she's working on it, we need people to focus. These are five modules going live six weeks from now. Including segregation of duties and security updates, which we can't, I mean, we can, but we're not going to, because we don't want to follow our own controls, right? We want to follow our own controls, but we are putting all of these into a train environment, and we need your team to test them and approve them. So we're also waiting on those, we've been waiting on those now for two weeks. So, we're getting significantly slow, um, slowed from the sort of other side, as we're putting things over the side of the fence. So, you know, we're going to talk a little bit about next steps when we get to the last page here, but one of the big things that I'm going to ask for you guys, is that you stay involved, especially through mid-July, while we're getting everything, there's a lot happening right now, that is to get you guys fully clean by twenty-four. So, you'll have, hopefully, um, given the manual reconciliations, an opinion that is clean, but you're going to have material weaknesses, because you haven't cleaned up the control environment, which is why we did everything manually. Twenty-four, excuse me, twenty-five, so starting July first of twenty-four through June thirtieth of twenty-five would be your first opportunity to clear up those material weaknesses. But in order for that to happen, all of the SOPs have to be live, all of the system changes have to be live for the greater part of the year, and working and functioning correctly. So not only do they have to be in the system, but people have to be using them, so there can't be any overrides, that kind of stuff. So everything, essentially what I'm telling you is everything in the next six weeks needs to clean up, and everyone needs to be marching to the same drumbeat, or we're gonna have problems for twenty-five. So, please, for the next six weeks, let's make sure everyone is on board and moving.
Uh, Vice Mayor Gore?
So, to your, uh, comments, you say everyone, is this everyone just the city departments that are under Dr. Mer, um, Mankor's purview, or is this others that we don't directly control?
Majority of them under Dr. Mankor's purview, however, treasury is a big piece of it, so.
Okay.
Given that's a constitutional office.
Right, that we don't oversee.
Correct.
So, even if we were to get, not even if we were, when we get city departments, um, under Dr. Mankor's purview to participate, if the treasurer's office doesn't come on board, or there's still some issues there, how is that impacting this?
So the good news is, is we've been meeting the treasurer's office, and, all week long, and I actually sat in the meeting yesterday. This week, they have been very active, we actually got, we have gotten done, yesterday and today, everything that we have been, have allocated to get done yesterday and today, we're hopeful that continues. We have, Dr. Mankor's done a great job in helping support us with the treasurer's office, um, so we prepped for this three weeks ago, two weeks ago, when we had the drop, and have made our expectations clear, and Shannon and her team have, have met them thus far this week. I will tell you, they are also manually sending out, uh, real estate tax bills this week, so, uh, we've been working around that. But, so far, so good, we're still making our timeline.
But, but to answer the, the question, if, if they are not consistent and stay on, on board, what is the impact there, even if you get the other city departments to do what they need to do? Because reconciliations-
You're not gonna love this answer, but the impact is, we, we do it on our own. Um, and we just put what we believe our best practice would be for the treasurer's office, and we publish the standard operating procedures and push them down.
Say that again?
What we would do in that circumstance, if, for example, we couldn't meet with treasury because they wouldn't meet with us, is we would use our understanding of what the Virginia State Treasurer does to write the standard operating procedures, and get them approved, um, and then push them down. That would be, there's nothing systematic, I do not believe, waiting on treasury.
Okay, that was my biggest concern.
Yes.
And is it, is this, uh, is the schools involved in this process as well?
No.
Okay, alright. Just wanted to get that clarification, thank you.
Um, but, since you brought it up, we came from visiting schools today, um, and I just wanted to make sure everyone was aware that they are moving forward with their MUNIS implementation, the same fashion that the city did, without external help.
Wow.
Which, in our opinion, is risky, um, so we are bringing that to your attention. My fear would be that we are spending a lot of time cleaning up this MUNIS system, and, um, if that implementation is not done correctly, and, and interfacing with your system, it could inadvertently mess up everything that's been cleaned up on this side. So, we need to keep an eye on it. I just did, that is the impact, I mean, they could take every, it could, everything that has been cleaned up on this side, if it's automatically interfaced without the proper checks and balances, and they are not calculating things correctly, or they don't have appropriate segregation of duties, that will wipe out the work that we've done here.
So.
But they're not supposed to go live until fiscal year twenty-six, so we've got-
Yeah, but even still, right? But, if they're all a part of what we're paying to have done to address our finances, and the recommend, the recommendation is obviously for them to have support, that would it come from you, or would it come from another MUNIS expert to help them build that out, or would, or, where would your involvement be in helping with that, or would it not?
So just as a reminder, the only involvement we really have with schools is just the roll-up, which is feeding into your financials, but also, we did provide them one person, remember, as part of the staff loan from Robert Half, back to schools, and we still have Vanessa out there doing the work, we actually had a call with her at seven o'clock tonight, and it's slow-going there, but she's doing it. But, right now, we are not contracted to help them with the system, we are not contracted to help them with the SOPs. So, that is part of the reason I actually joined them for the meeting today, to find out what their plan was, and I had agreed to at least get them on the phone with our ERP team for a couple hours over the next week, just gratis, so at least they understand what risks they have to take into account.
Yeah, we definitely need to have a, um, follow-up discussion on this, because, thank you for bringing it to our attention, because it's really not so much the risk that they're doing, it's the risk that we, that this imposes on us, right?
Correct.
So, it's their actions, and we appoint the school board, school board appoints the superintendent, and so there, we need to leverage our authority in this situation. They're spending millions of dollars, um, on this situation, and so quite frankly, it's not a matter of if they want to do this. I'm rubbing my face, because I'm really just tired of having these same conversations about systems that we know we need to be working together to fix, and there's been a lot of time and investment to get to where we are now, and to hear stuff like, not have full participation with ERP, I think is just, is really not tolerable. Like, I don't think, this should ever be reported out again. And then to hear about the schools, that needs to be a special meeting, um, to discuss that head-on.
I agree with you.
Yeah.
This was me four hours ago, when I found out, and I've already scheduled two meetings that I have before here, to try to get my hands around it, so I can at least share something with you to give you guys a heads up.
Yeah, I mean, we just had a special, we just had a meeting with them to talk about their additional budget ask. We need to call a special meeting, talk about how they can potentially mess up our financial systems. So, um, Dr. Mankor, if you can make a note of that, um, call a special meeting, I can do it with you guys' guidance on how to go about that, but we definitely need to have a conversation.
Yeah, as I said, I wanted to just present the risks to them, to get them, like, I, I don't even think that they understand what the breadth of that challenge would be.
Yeah.
With implementations, you don't know what you don't know until it's too late.
And we got here because of a MUNIS implementation. The whole reason why we are in this situation is due to MUNIS implementation.
I don't know why we would do it all over again the same way.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Uh, Counsel Joyner?
Yeah, well, I, I have some concerns, not just about the schools, but about our, our implementation here. I mean, here, all the things, I mean, you know, obviously, we, we go on live July one, and we're not ready at this point in time, so I have some very, very serious concerns about that. Um, so maybe we need a special meeting about that. Yeah, uh, we need to discuss that.
Do it all at once?
Whatever, I think we need to have this special meeting, because that, that's really concerning. Also, had a question about manual bills, can you, why, why, manual-
Real estate bills.
Could we, could we talk about that a little bit, and why are we doing that, and, 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 I don't, I'm just concerned about that.
That would be a question for the treasurer.
Okay.
I will tell you, the only reason I know about this is because we were in there doing the standard operating procedure, and I was concerned that not everyone was paying full attention, and you really need to pay attention for the standard operating procedures, so I said, please, let me do the bills while you do the standard operating procedures. So I stuffed envelopes yesterday, so if anyone's bills are wrong, blame me, I'm just kidding, don't blame me.
Normally, do we normally do that, or don't, don't, do we not use some?
They use a vendor to do that.
Why would we, why would we be doing manually, instead of going to the vendor?
My understanding is, and again, this is hearsay, because I am not involved, but my understanding is, is that there were problems with the real estate bills the last several times, and Shannon was concerned that the problem was due to the vendor, and so she's sort of running it test to see if the problems stay the same when they manually mail out the bills, so this is a one-off, and not the way they normally do that.
Alright.
I don't know if that's gonna-
Yeah.
I don't know if it's an appropriate test to get them what they want, but-
Right, is that what she said?
Yeah.
Yeah, there's seven thousand, give or take.
I don't know, I mean, I guess, I, I'm just saying, that just seems like a, sort of an archaic thing to do in this day and time. You know, to, to stuff an envelope and have it addressed, it just seems kind of strange, but I mean, whatever, I've got a question, like, you know, you're doing all these SOPs, how are we going to, staff is actually going to be using those SOPs, how are we going to monitor whether they're using them consistently and successfully, I mean, you know?
So do you, that is one of the reasons why we asked for the additional work, to get the repository, repository together, and the training together, do you remember when we brought that, there was a lot of discussion with Dr. Mankor about who's going to monitor that? and make sure that they're being updated. And we had recommended it be someone who is above the departments, potentially someone like an Assistant City Manager kind of role, or a deputy, who's responsible for pinging the departments and making sure. So, that's how.
Yeah, but we need to establish that. I mean, here we are, we've got these SOPs, you know, the, the contract is winding down, and, and we need to make sure that we have that person. So, maybe we can talk about that in that meeting. When we talk about some of these other things. I think there are a number of issues that seems to me that need to be addressed. And we need to have this special meeting where we talk about them. Whether it's the schools, whether it's the IT implementation here.
And then the, the personnel roles being filled
Yes.
so that
Yeah.
they can be brought on board and trained to do the training.
Yeah.
Once, you know, we'll do the initial one, obviously, but once we're gone, you'll hire new hires who will need to be trained.
Right.
Um, and work on succession planning and all of those things.
Exactly, exactly.
Uh, Vice Mayor Gore, and then myself?
I, I just noticed the Treasurer's in the office, in the audience. Do you want to comment to
No, perfect.
the question regarding the bills?
Oh, okay.
And then even the participation? If you don't want to, that's fine, but I just saw you there. I want to make sure I respectfully acknowledge you, in case you wanted to address anything.
I'm sure, I'm sure, come in.
Hello, everybody.
Hey.
Um, in regards of the real estate, us taking the time out to mail the bills on our own, that is because last year, the year before last, for our personal property taxes, with BMS, this is our printing vendor at this time, they, we've received so many return addresses coming back, to where we asked them over and over, are they using the, um, this is a NAPA system, where they do a skip tracing to make sure that the addresses are correct? We received more than 300, um, return envelopes back. So, I decided this, for just the real estate this year, to see if I can physically send these bills out on our own, to see if we're gonna get the return as much as BMS or the printing vendor. So, that's what I've decided. And as of today, we printed, we, we had an issue, issues, um, as far as munis throughout the weeks, and we got it all straight with Commissioner Revenue Office. Uh, we printed all of the bills as of Friday and Monday. And as of today, everything is lined up for us to be able to send out as of tomorrow. We have a check getting ready to go to the post office with the bulk mailing, and everything is already sealed and every, and ready to set to go. Um, and this is only the individual, um, bills. And when I say individual, we're talking about the ones that do not have a mortgage or any multiple, um, billing. So, we're just talking about the individual parcels.
How many? How many?
Um, with that, well, it was, it was $5,029 for the individuals, and there's $2,000 of the multiples. So, when I say multiples, if the sentences have more than five or more parcels, we're in, we always individually sent those out. So, that's what we've done, it's worked on, it's getting ready to be sent to the mail tomorrow. So, they're done.
Any questions about that?
The test. All right.
Are you finished? Okay. This question's for, uh, Dr. Makers. You know, in preparation for this special meeting, I think, you know, we, you need to probe the school system, that they need to have some money in their budget for this implementation. Because, you know, I don't think the, the expertise is there in-house, and I'd much rather pay for it upfront, get the expertise to come in, help them with a, uh, proper transition over and implementation, as opposed to paying for fixing everything. Because if passes, you know, an indicator for the future, it's gonna end up being a huge mess. Go ahead.
All right, let's move on to the good news department. The industry reconciliations, um, have been completed since we last talked here. We have sat down individually, both in the commission meeting, as well as with each industry partner, um, to get their feedback. Uh, Russ and, uh, team are diligently working through the feedback. We are scheduling follow-up meetings with them, I would say, within the next two to three weeks. Does that seem right, to keep me honest? Uh, and then that topic should be closed, and essentially waiting for the final audit. But that is moving, uh, the budget has been approved for the wastewater treatment plant facility. Um, and that is also a significant step. The last piece that we're working on right now is how we are going to bill the industry partners for fiscal year '25. We're going to try to adjust the way that we are billing them, so that as capital expenditures go up, their bills go up. So that we, as a city, as a partner, don't end up further behind. If you recall, over the last couple of years, we've been several million dollars behind. That hasn't been recouped, um, because we've been using miscellaneous revenues. So, um, this is in an attempt to recoup those costs and offset those. All right. Um, last full topic to cover here is open issues. If you recall, we used to have, um, I think it was 96 open issues. I think we've removed four of them, and we've closed a bunch of them. Um, but we are now going through the progress of, as we are closing things that would accumulate to a material weakness, we are closing them off of, and I want to be clear, the larger open issues list. So, part of these items, a good chunk of them, are standard operating procedures and system-related, which fall under our scope of the work. But there are a number, probably 40% of these, that are not in our scope of work, that we're relying on Dr. Makers and her team, or the Treasurer and her team, to close. So, we have instituted weekly meetings. Uh, actually, this week, we're doing it twice. We had one on Monday, and we're gonna have an in-person meeting on Friday, which is why Kristi and team are staying until late Friday night, to make sure that that progress is happening on those open issues. This week, we've asked for all of the open issues that are not under our responsibility to be assigned out, and an update put in them, so we know where they are. And then we're gonna continue these meetings every week, slowly transitioning them over to Dr. Makers and her team, so that they could take ownership of what needs to be closed. So, these are issues, to refresh everyone's memory, coming from three places, right? Things that we identified in our initial narrative walkthroughs, um, things that were in the external auditor's report, and then things that came out of the Alvarez and Marcel report. And then, as we are working our way through them, there may be, like, we had, we closed one for schools today that we reopened in another way, because the risk was closed for this year, but it still needs to be addressed for next year, and they need a standard operating procedure to do that. So, we opened another one to make sure they don't lose track of that. So, you're gonna see this number kind of move around, as we continue to come in for these reports. Um, that's normal. In case you needed reading glasses, here's where we are, and here is, um, the categories of issues. There are now 31 that are open that have not been assigned. So, that is what we're hoping to tackle on Friday. All right. Items needing council attention. So, I've tried to hit on these as I've gone through. One, monitor the Finance Committee closely, now that we've got a new structure. Two, it is a statement, but you were sent two out of these three documents, and the third, we'll make sure that you get next week, but you can look them up as well. You were sent our statement on memo, uh, which we reviewed last week. You were also sent, I believe, Section 316, about, um, the considerations of fraud in a financial statement audit. We are also asking you to review Standard 99. We want everyone to be educated on the discussion that we had last week, and why it is that we are so concerned. So, if you could do that work, just to understand that. There is also, um, we have proposed supplemental personal property tax receivable procedures, that we believe are necessary, and that Alva, not Alvarez, excuse me, that Robinson, Farmer, and Cox have told us are necessary. So, um, these, this is what will need to be done, to get the opinion on the 20, because there was involvement there. So, we did distribute some items post, and ahead of that meeting last week. No one has responded with any questions or anything back. So, we just want to make sure everyone's reviewing it. And if you have questions, to please do so. You can get them to me or Jack, and we will respond, or, or Russ, um, who's in the system. So, we are actively looking at things. We have, um, you know, documentation that's being pulled across the board, and we have backup plans for that, if we can't get things from the state that we need to get. The next piece here is staying involved with city leadership on actions required, and this is what I covered. ERP implementations, the closure of the issues, the completion of the standard operating procedures, and au, also the audit preparation in progress. I mentioned this earlier, I'll mention it again, the next week's six weeks are incredibly important. And then, this is well done on the list. And I know we have a meeting scheduled for the week of July 8. I think it's that Wednesday, to talk about, you know, how the implementation went, and how the standard operating procedures are being updated and all of that. But we did talk about in one of our meetings, a couple of weeks ago, maybe even a month and a half ago, um, about citywide communications discussion. Uh, I just didn't want that to get dropped. So, I threw it on the bottom here, far number three. But we should plan on doing that at some point, before we leave the field. And that closes up our report. Any questions?
Uh, so one question I got for you, um, for this, uh, recommended future discussion of citywide communications. How I'm taking this is, you're requesting for staff to go and create, like, a communications plan, and then to bring it back to city councils.
Well, I think it's a little more involved than that.
Okay.
I think the original idea stemmed from getting the departments to intercommunicate.
Okay.
But there's also... There's also an external part of that as well. So, how is the city communicating with their constituents? So, um, just opening up that back and forth, where as the city, the constituents understand, uh, what's going on here. And so, like, if you look at, for example, the city of Richmond, they have, you know, for each department, who do you contact if you have an issue? Um, you know, and then you can pull down information from meetings and all those. Um, you know, city government works for its residents. So, how can we have open communications with the residents now, moving forward? So, that's part of it, and part of it is internal to the city. How is every department communicating with each other, so that there's a more seamless transfer of information? Right now, we're facilitating it, because we're in every department. So, we're raising everything. But there needs to be a role and a communications plan in there for all departments to have that aggregated communication on the regular, not just quarterly meetings.
Okay.
And then, communication with you all, city council.
Uh, Councilor Holloway?
I, I was just, I, I was having a concern with the fact, one, I was having very str- uh, trouble hearing is kind of very low, and I was not provided, again, with the package, um, prior to this meeting. We don't have it in agenda, the information that she's going over. That, that continues to be a concern. Especially in, in this case, where I'm outside of, uh, the meeting, and then I, and then barely being able to hear, and not able to go over that information before the, uh, before the meeting. I, 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 it's, it's, some of the stuff is, is, is kind of difficult to pick up without having that information in front of us.
So, I understand that the report that I provided over was provided in the council package last week. Is that correct?
Yes.
So, there were maybe two or three slides that were added.
Say again that?
The report was provided in the packet to council last week. I made sure it was done by Tuesday, or Wednesday, whenever it goes over, so that you could have it. I made some updates to make it more current today, but the gist of it is still the same.
So, the information that I went over seems to be a little bit different than what you're going over now, and some of the stuff, I'm hardly able to hear. So, I was trying to figure out where the disconnect was. So, you provided something differently today?
I just updated some of the slides. For example, we made a little more progress in the issues. I updated the next steps slightly. And then I blew out the audit recommendations, just with some numbers. Um, just to support where we are. But the bullets are still the same. And I am on top of the mic here, uncomfortably so. So, I don't know what to do about the, uh, this, the sound.
Are you finished?
Thank you, sir mayor.
Okay. Uh, Councilor Joyner?
Yeah, I have a question. In our packet, we had, um, an additional, um, report, and open city risks, entitled "Open City Risks."
Is that the Treasurer?
Yeah. And it, um...
It's your Monday this week.
Pardon?
I was letting her know.
Oh, it's our Monday status report?
It's your Monday.
Okay, yes.
"Open City Risks." "The city is in a cash crisis."
Yep.
This is in red ink. "The city is in a cash crisis with future headwinds. The extraordinary, extraordinary maintenance required by the wastewater treatment plant has exhausted any excess cash reserves that the city had accumulated. If any other emergency occurs, there are no additional reserves left to fund those extraordinary expenses, and the city is looking at potential budget cuts to do so." Can you speak to that?
I can. That's one of the reasons we changed the billing. So, that risk has been out there since...
Yes.
When did we have the real issue? October, give or take?
November.
November, October, November?
Yeah.
Um, so that was out there. We had some concerns. We were worried that we weren't gonna get through this window right now, when the, when the real estate, uh, taxes went out, to when we restarted receiving funds, which is why we want to stay on top of those real estate taxes, 'cause those start coming in in June. And that then funds your government through the end of the fiscal year. So, we were concerned that if something, like, the oxygen plant at the Hope Always Waterna Treatment Plant went completely down, and we couldn't continue to keep it alive with the oxygen that we've been giving it, that's a $14 million project. And that would be a problem right now, um, without going into significant reserves. But that is one of the reasons why Russ and our team are trying to make the change with the Waste Water Commission, so that the funds start to be rebuilt in a more timely way.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, these open city risks, I think, are very significant. And, um, something that we probably, when we, when council meets, we need to talk about these. These risks, they're pretty significant.
We do update them every week when we send a status report in there with a little note update on the bottom, so you can follow the progress.
I see it, yeah, but there are still some that are open.
Yes.
Yeah.
But there are also some that are closed?
I understand, yes, I understand. That's great. Glad of that.
I'm trying to be a good news bearer at the end of this.
Yeah, I know, but we've just got, we've got to deal with reality.
Mm-hmm.
Thanks.
Okay, are there any other questions? All right, seeing their lights. Thank you, Ms. Ness.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Okay. We are moving along to communications from citizens. I don't have anybody currently signed up. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak tonight? Okay, seeing none, we're gonna move on to, uh, public hearings. Uh, Madam Clerk, will you please read the statement?
"All persons addressing council shall step to the microphone, give name, and if they reside in Hope Well, their ward number and limit comments to three minutes. No one may address council more than once per meeting unless granted permission by the presiding officer. Speakers address council as a body, not individual counselors. Questions are asked of counselors and staff through the presiding officer. Any person who makes personal, impertinent, abusive, or slanderous statements, or incites disorderly conduct in the council chamber may be reprimanded by the presiding officer and be moved from the meeting upon a majority vote of counselors present, excluding any counselor who is the subject of the motion. See Rules 405 and 406."
Okay, Mr. Ward?
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council. Tonight's first public hearing is a conditional use permit request. It's, uh, for the construction of a single-family dwelling on a non-conforming lot. Actually, our first one tonight is, is for two houses on two adjoining non-conforming lots, those being parcels 024, 0310, and 024 is 0... lots, those being parcels 024, 0310, and 024, 0305, located on Maryland Avenue. You may remember these presentations from a few weeks ago when we did our first reading, but the applicant for the, the first conditional use permit is Mr. David Edwards. These properties are located in Ward 2, which is zoned R2 residential medium. You also may remember this particular application because these particular houses on these lots was approved back in 2022. Some maps showing the general location of the property and then on the right-hand side, the specific parcels in question. The nonconformity with these lots is that they are less than the required minimum size for the R2 district and they are also narrower than what the district requires. This is an image of the proposed house. They are one-story, single-family dwellings, three-bedroom, two-bath, 1,300 square feet. The two houses will be next to each other, but they will be differentiated through variations in materials. Some elevations for the house, again, the floor plan. Staff believes that the proposed dwellings are compatible and complementary with the, with the neighborhood. The average size of the dwellings that already exist in the area, the average size is 1,123 square feet, so these proposed houses are larger. And again, the two houses will vary in materials and color to avoid having the exact same house next to each other. Staff recommends approval of this particular request. We had some conditions, and that is to construct the proposed dwellings as presented on the plans, install brick or stone veneer on all four sides of foundations, construct the dwellings with roof overhang or eaves on all sides, a driveway of concrete or asphalt, foundation shrub plantings, and ensure a minimum tree canopy of 20%. Planning Commission recommended 4-0 at their public hearing held on April 4th for the same And again, these are those conditions here. I'm available for any questions. The applicant is also here this evening if you have questions for him.
Okay, are there any questions from city council before we open the public hearing? Okay, seeing no lights. Public hearing is now open, I don't have anyone signed up. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak on this public hearing? Okay, seeing none. Public hearing is now closed. All right, is there a motion to approve the conditional use permit as presented?
Seconded.
All right, motion's been made by Council Denton, seconded by Council Joyner. Is there any discussion? Seeing no lights, roll call, please.
Council Holloway?
Yes.
Council Joyner?
Yes.
Council Harris? Mayor Parton?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Gore?
Yes.
Council Denton?
Yes.
Council Appellum?
Did you hear me? Yes.
He heard you. Motion passes 6 to 0.
Okay.
Thank you.
Public hearing number two.
That's it, yes.
I got your vote, Council Appellum.
Okay.
Moving on to public hearing number two. Again, it's a similar application, conditional use permit request for the construction of a single-family dwelling on a non-conforming lot. This particular parcel in question is located on Crescent Avenue, it's parcel 0280020. The applicant is James R. Jones, this property's located in Ward 3, zoned R1, low density. Here's some maps, again, general location and then specific location. Again, this is one that was brought before you approximately a year ago and was denied, but it was a completely different applicant and a completely different house. The nonconformity with this particular lot is that it's smaller than the required 12,000 square feet and it's less than the required 80 feet wide. The proposed dwelling from this applicant is a cottage-style house, one-story, single-family dwelling, three-bedroom, two-bath. In this particular image, it does show a garage, but that garage will not be constructed due to the narrowness of the lot. This particular house is 1,659 square feet. So, floor plan and then an image of the rear. This particular dwelling is of a unique architectural style, it's a cottage style and it complements the varied architecture that's already in the neighborhood. The average size of the dwellings in the surrounding area is 1,695 square feet. This one is just slightly smaller, 1,659. And this one, it does have a smaller lot size and it does have the steep slopes in the rear that limit options in terms of house size. Staff recommends approval of the CUP with the following conditions: to construct the proposed dwelling as presented minus the garage, including a stone veneer covering the full facade of the front door projection, and that includes the sides, with vinyl shake siding on all other front facades. Install horizontal vinyl siding on all other building facades, a minimum four-width-wide trim around all front facade doors and windows, the installation of a three-pane front window with the three-pane transom as shown in, in the elevation, driveway of concrete or asphalt, roof overhangs and eaves, minimum tree canopy of 20%, and essentially all other proffered features noted in the application addendum dated March 11th of this year. Planning Commission recommended approval with a vote of 4-0 at the public hearing held on April 4th. They continued with staff's recommended conditions and did add a specification of the 12-inch overhang on the, on the, on the eaves. With this particular house, it'd be additional brick veneer on the foundation sides. And then the one other condition added by Planning Commission was to coordinate with the city stormwater division on the armoring of the ravine to achieve proper storm drainage. This particular application, no comment, public comment was received. There was one comment made at the Planning Commission public hearing and that is a comment Again, these are all the conditions as proffered by the Planning Commission or put forth by the Planning Commission. I'm available for any questions and the applicant is here as well if you have questions for them.
Okay, are there any questions from city council? Okay, seeing no lights and hearing no one online. Public hearing is now open, I don't have anyone signed up for this one. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak? Okay. Public hearing is now closed. Is there a motion to approve the conditional use permit for Crescent Avenue as presented?
Seconded.
Motion's been made by Council Joyner and seconded by Council Denton. Is there any discussion? Seeing no lights, roll call, please.
Council Joyner?
Yes.
Council Harris?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Gore?
Yes.
Council Denton?
Yes.
Council Appellum?
Yes.
Motion passes 5 to 0.
Okay, public hearing number three.
Our last conditional use permit request for the evening, again, single-family dwelling, non-conforming lot. This one is located on Boston Street, it's parcel 0330020. The applicant for this particular lot is Muco LLC, property's located in Ward 6 and zoned R2. Again, some maps showing general location and specific location. The nonconformity with this particular lot is that it's less than the required width of 75 feet. There's an, some elevations of the proposed house, it's two-story, single-family dwelling, three-bedroom, two-and-a-half bath. This property is 1,240 square feet. Then some elevations showing you the floor plan as well as all four sides of the proposed structure. And this particular house will have a rear deck instead of a patio. Staff analysis is that this architectural style of proposed dwelling, which we would call some, some form of a neo chalet-type property, will enhance the neighborhood of primarily vernacular design. The average size of the dwellings in the area is 1,139 square feet, this proposed house is 1,240, so therefore it's larger than the average. Staff recommends approval of the CUP with the following conditions: that construction of the proposed dwelling will be as presented, using cement fiberboard siding in the patterns illustrated in the house elevation submitted with the application. That's a proffer that was put forward by the applicant himself. Installation of a concrete or asphalt driveway, the roof overhang, and the minimum 20% tree canopy coverage. Planning Commission at their public hearing held on April 4th recommends approval with a vote of 4 to 0 with those same conditions that, that staff recommended. One citizen did send in a written comment opposing the construction, but no reason was given. And then, at the public hearing at the Planning Commission, one citizen commented that she would like to see more windows on the sides of the house. Recommendation is to approve with the conditions as presented by staff and Planning Commission. I'm available for any questions you may have, I don't believe the applicant is here this evening.
Okay, are there any questions for Mr. Ward? Seeing no lights and hearing no one online, go ahead and open up the public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak, since I don't have anyone signed up? Public hearing is now closed. Do I have a motion to approve the conditional use permit for Boston Street as presented?
Seconded.
All right, motion's been made by Council Denton, seconded by...
You think you can still take a top?
Uh, motions been made by Council...
Just mute the line.
Motion's been made by Council Denton, seconded by, um, Council Joyner. Is there any other discussion? Seeing no lights, roll call, please.
Council Holloway?
Yes.
Council Joyner?
Yes.
Council Harris?
Yes.
Mayor Parton?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Gore?
Yes.
Council Denton?
Yes.
Council Appellum?
Yes.
Motion passes 7 to 0.
Thank you.
Public hearing number four, Mr. Branson.
Yes, let me open this up quickly. Okay, good evening. I'm going to give a brief presentation on where we are in the budget and the budget ordinance that's before you, and I'll be happy to answer questions as we go along here at the end. Let's talk, I just want to start a little with the budget process. So, the budget work began back in December, so we gave out departmental requests to start putting their budget together and provided the first revenue forecast that was done. A lot of that was done in conjunction with the Commissioner of Revenue's Office, who does a lot of our forecasts on revenues they collect. Departments then provided their budgets and did that budget entry in, in January, we had, they had meetings with the city manager and, and we just continued on with honing revenues, the revenue forecasts and all of that. Starting in March, we had council work sessions, so by that time, talking about specifically, we had about an hour and a half, I think I stood up here, talked about, walked through the revenues and what was going on and some of the history of what was happening. We then talked about expenses and the capital improvement program on the next week, March 21st, and then department requested presentations happened the following week on March 28th, when you heard what their, what major departments were having changes, what those changes were and why they needed them. We then went back and based on your comments and our continued work, completed a, a council, the public, started the public hearings and the first was the tax resolution on April 16th, where we came and asked for you to look at raising various taxes and you did that for the real estate tax, lodging tax, and adding a cigarette tax. We'll talk a little about, a little about, a little more about those in a minute. And then tonight, we're back with the first reading of the budget ordinance, we'll be back in two weeks for the second reading of the budget ordinance. And you did get a new budget ordinance tonight, I think, in your, in your packet and the, the change there was we want, we needed to make sure, when I looked at it last minute, the, all of the changes to put the, the regional water budget in line with what was approved by commission, it was slightly off, so we needed to change those to make sure those were accurate. So, that was the change that precipitated that new, that new request or that new ordinance there. Otherwise, nothing else happened. So, let's talk about that ordinance, that, the primary purpose of this, and this is, this is important in terms of, you know, understanding what we're, what happens when we adopt a budget, is we're setting appropriation limits and you do that sometimes at the fund level, sometimes at the department level, sometimes at the program level, those are all the things that are detailed within your ordinance. It does talk about the expected revenues we're going to get, but revenues are going to be what they're going to be. Sometimes they come in higher, sometimes they come in lower and that, and then we deal with whatever those results are, positive or negative. But the appropriation limits means, here's how much, based on what we expect revenues to be and what we've talked about here in the past, that we are allowing, we're saying you can spend this much money. If you need more than that, you have to come back to council to request a higher appropriation. They can spend less, that's always fine, but to spend more, they have to come back to council. That, that has not always happened and it's not necessarily been the, always been the, the ethic or I don't know what the right term is. I was talking to a staff member today and she was, you know, and she was basically saying, and she's not a person that does anything with this, right? Not a person that would come to you or ask anything, but she was saying, well, we don't have to, you know, as long as the council knows, right, that something's going up, we don't have to get approval. I said, absolutely not, right? So, it's like, if, if it goes above appropriation, we have to come back. So, I'll tell you that what, if it goes above the appropriations, we have to, we'll come back to ask you that, to, to increase that. We did that a few months ago with regional water. Now, some of the things, there are things that happen that we want to say, well, you know, if it's a, you know, if it is a small amount, the budget ordinance does allow for the city manager to do some things on her own initiative, right, that you are giving permission to do in this budget. One, if there's, if there's unencumbered balances within a department or appropriation or fund, she can transfer some of those, or, you know, within the budget, you know, within that budget and within, and sometimes between budgets, right? Now, if you're transferring between budgets, she can do up to 25,000. Within budgets, as long as it doesn't exceed the appropriation, if I have an appropriation in the finance department for a million dollars, I can move it around between, you know, between line items, but it's, if I'm going to move it to somewhere else, the city manager could move $25,000, but other than that, would have to come back to... But other than that, would have to come back to city council. So, this just allows for small things that might happen during the year, a way to address those administratively. And you're, that's part of what the boardance, what you're approving when you do this boardance. The other things, you know, should we make fund and expense adjustments for non-budgetary revenue items, insurance recoveries, refunds or reimbursements, any revenue source not to exceed twenty-five thousand? So, they're just small things you're, that's also, I just want to point out, when you, when you set this, or when you adopt this ordinance, those things are included. These have been the standard things that you've done. So, one of the things that, this does, it does set these kind of terms and conditions for how do we change the budget as we move forward. Okay, so, one of the things that we, it also says, all outstanding appropriations will carry over to fiscal year twenty-five. But, one of the things we'll be doing is going through, and if someone does not have their monies encumbered appropriately in contract, in the process of spending, those appropriations will go away. We will not spend those. We will not carry them over to twenty-five. What we will carry over, grants, if we have a contract that, you know, is in process and needs to, you know, and you're not going to stop that grant halfway, or contract halfway through, we'll carry that over if it's in process. And capital that's in process will carry over. What we've asked all the departments to do this year in capital, and I think you see that, you see that really with both the general fund capital as well as the regional water capital. And it was actually, it was interesting, the regional water people really wanted this. I mean, I was doing it separately, but they, you know, that we're not carrying over something from four years ago, which has happened. We've carried something over for years, and without your approving, we all of a sudden, we move a couple of million dollars over, right? So, we're not doing that. Something, progress will carry it over. Otherwise, it will expire if they, and they should have included that in the FY twenty-five capital ask. So, just, it's, we will carry things over that need to be carried over, but we're not carrying things over for the sake of carrying things over. So, that's an important, I think, aspect of what we'll be, what we'll be doing here. And part of that, just, it's a good practice, and it also helps us just get a hold on our spending while we're here making appropriations decisions, that things aren't carried over, that, you know, frankly, it's, we may not remember where that came from or how long it's been on the books. Just will carry over year to year. So, that's, that's the budget ordinance, and there's, you know, there's more in there, but those are the highlights of what, when you adopt the budget ordinance, what you're adopting. So, let me, I want to give a brief overview. We have spent a lot of time, but I want to talk about where you spend your money, since we're talking about appropriations, and there's a lot of pie, pieces of pie in here. The city does a lot, provides a lot of different services and does a lot of different things in the community. You're really active, and this just represents all the different types of programs that you provide. Excluding the school monies that come from the state and federal government, so they're not provided by the city, and I guess including what the city provides to schools, there's a hundred and forty-eight point one million dollars of expenditures for the city. So, that is monies coming in, spent on the city, including the portion you're giving to the schools. It does not include state and federal monies for the schools. But you can see that between, you know, with everything you do, if we'll just briefly start at the top, public safety, including police and fire, thirteen percent of the budget. Public works, thirteen percent of the budget, right? General admin, eight percent of the budget. Regional water, sixteen percent of the total city budget. Sewer, nine percent. Health and welfare, nine percent, right? You have parks and rec, judicial, the schools, the what you provide to schools is eleven percent of that, of that total budget. Non-departmental will be things like debt service, primarily things like that. Community development outside, outside agencies, that's the money you're giving, right, to outside agencies. So, that's the extent, that's a very big view of what we're approving. Now, the, the resolution also includes the full school amount. We have, we've plugged in an amount from last year, right, or this year, rather. I did see that the governor signed the budget, and so, we should know soon what their actual monies will be. They'll be able to give us an actual budget amount here shortly. And to the extent that's different, we may have to come back to get that approved, but, but we will do that. So, that's just oftentimes an issue that we have with schools and the timing of their, of their state budget. So, that's where the expenses go, where, all the different places we spend it in terms of the type of...
Mr. Branson?
Yes?
Before you go ahead, I think we're getting to our witching hour. Do I have a motion to extend the meeting?
Yeah.
Oh, my gosh.
Someone?
Do you extend?
How long do you want to extend it?
Extend it a particular amount, or?
To finish the agenda.
Okay. So, the motion's to extend the meeting until we finish the agenda.
I'll second that.
Second it, okay. Is there any discussion? Seeing no lights, roll call, please.
Counselor Holloway? Counselor Joyner?
Yes.
Counselor Harris?
Yes.
Mayor Parton?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Gore?
Yes.
Counselor Denton?
No.
Counselor Pelham?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear your motion.
It's to extend the meeting until we finish the agenda.
Oh, you extended the agenda. Okay, yes.
Motion passes five to zero.
Five to...
Five to two, sorry, five to two.
Okay. Go ahead.
Okay. Yeah, I will stand this. I also want to indicate that we were going to talk about this last week. I think we were unable to have our additional work session because of a quorum issue. We have added in a hundred and thirty thousand dollars to the schools based on what was discussed about trying to fund the longtime youth position. So, we had a hundred and thirty thousand. We have been continued, we continued to go through and make some cuts, and we did get an extra a hundred and thirty thousand in the general fund. So, that is in the maximum amount we give to the schools. I want to let you know that. It's not, it's to, not to make that decision for you, but to make sure that we didn't have to come back and delay this meeting if you decided you want to do that. But we could always come back and change that if you decide you don't want to do that. But we wanted to make sure this kept moving forward. That was one of the things we wanted to talk about last week, but we were unable to. Expenses by type, you know, most of the, most of the expenses we have here are personnel costs. Services supplies is, is actually, is also high on this list. This is a people business, you spend a lot for people. On the services supplies, you have a lot in the utilities that spend money on chemicals and machines and maintenance and things of that nature. Professional services, debt, capital, transfers, which is just stuff happens between funds. And then, the school's contribution is there and others. So, again, a hundred and forty point one million there also, but just a sense of where the money goes to in terms of those different types of expenditures. One of the things that, again, we want to talk about, this is the, so, as I get into capital, we asked you to, to increase taxes and to add taxes in order to fund capital. You did that. This, this provides a list of the capital we are able to fund. However, cigarette taxes, we initially proposed at forty cents. I think there was a discussion that a lot of our neighbors had up to ninety cents, and we decided to go to eighty cents. Well, it turns out that our neighbors do have those amounts. We're unable, because of a state law that passed after they got those, to go that high. So, we can go to forty cents. And then, in talking with Commissioner of Revenue, who will be implementing this, and we'll be working closely with her in the finance side, that it's going to take a while to implement. So, we've reduced down, we had a million dollars expected, we've reduced that down to three hundred thousand. And so, what happened with that, we had to take out some road projects, none related to the state or federal monies. So, everything related to state and federal monies is still in this program. And if you look down to the bottom of funding sources, under public works, which are roads projects, you know, about half of the little, you know, about forty percent of the project costs are revenues, are from the state and federal sources. So, those are all preserved, and you can see the list of projects here. We've also preserved pavement rehab across the board. So, you have all the state, federal projects, pavement and pavement rehab, both what's required, what we needed to do because of the state and what we don't, you know, and send the formula monies that we get from VDOT through gas taxes and whatnot. The other thing we did is the IT host services are, we're able to get those, those were about three times, you know, about twice higher, because we're able to get a lease for those, do those on a lease at no interest charge. So, basically, get the servers, pay for them over three years. So, that allowed us to reduce a little bit here. We should be getting more cigarette tax money the following year, and so, that'll help replenish those kinds of funds. But in total, and if you look at the second line from the bottom, the general fund will be contributing two point one million dollars to, to the, to the capital. Stormwater fees, we're requesting higher fees. We'll be coming back to you once public works has their study done. That should be very shortly. That's another nine hundred thousand, and the rest are state and the local sources. Regional water treatment, this gets a little hard to read, so, sorry, sorry about that. But there's a couple of things, and Heather mentioned this briefly. I think a couple of positive things happened this year. One is the, the budget as proposed by regional wastewater staff was approved and is included in this larger numbers, and it's a budget of eighteen point nine million for operating costs. We then have debt service, which is paid, and the last piece is capital. So, this represents, this nine point six million represents the major projects that the regional water needs to do to maintain its facility this year. And it's significantly more than what they've done the last several years. They've averaged about three and a half million dollars a year in capital. This is a nine and a half million dollar, you know, set of projects. Actually, in six, approximately, well, on here, it's probably about four and a half million of this is already under contract. So, this is one where, even though they were under contract, I said, we need to put it, you know, we're not going to carry it over, you need to put it back in this year's budget. So, this does include some projects that got under contract this year and that are carrying over. And, and that nine point six million, there is, there are some things that we said, do we really need this, are you going to get to it? Those were moved out to next year with, with the understanding that if it's needed, we'll come back and, and put it back in the budget if we can get through these other projects. Now, what Heather said, which is significant, and actually is proposed by industry partners, was that rather than creating a rate and charging them that rate, collecting that money through the year and then doing the projects whenever, that we would, as we're doing projects, we get a bill. Once we're ready, once we get that bill for payment, we then, that next month, charge the industry partners and the city as the, you know, in our city sewer to pay those. So, there's a very small time of float, maybe no float, right? So, I say, we can make our terms for payment forty-five days, get that on, you know, get their money, get everybody's money, and pay those bills as we go. So, that's a, what it does for the industry partners is, if we only build three and a half million, they're not, they haven't been charged for nine and a half million dollars of, of capital. And for us, if we build the whole nine and a half million, we are not trying to go back on a true-up basis to try to get that money back. So, I think that's a positive accomplishment, and I really hope we are able to invest this amount of money because I think it'll be, it'll help stabilize our facility out there. These are the additional capital projects that were requested but not funded at this time. So, these would be things I would consider as options as we identify monies that might be available. For example, if we, we've talked about this before, as we, in this fiscal year, if we're in a position of having anything left over, this could be an opportunity to spend it on something with this, or you might put it in reserves. There's lots of opportunities, but this would be an area that I think we kind of have a built-in list now of where we might want to put funds, or as we go through the year. One of the things that, that I'm recommending we implement is a mid-year budget. So, we look in December, and we look at where are we, how's revenue coming in? Do we have savings, are there extra costs? And do it just to, just kind of a mini version of what we've done now, a recalibration of our budget at mid-year puts us in a better position to start next year's budget and gives you a better sense, gives everybody a better sense of what's going in our budget as we, as we go through. And so, there'd be opportunities kind of built in to also look at, hey, if we have money, reprogram. I know we've talked about if there's, if we have money from unspent salaries and wages. My concern is, that's half the, half the equation. The other half is revenues and, and all of the expenses that are, that are going on. And, and so, we may want to wait at least until we close the books to know exactly where we are with all those things. But this, this becomes a kind of a built-in list of where you might be able to spend some of those monies. Okay, so, revenue, revenue highlights, we've talked about some of these things. I just want to, you know, remind that we increased real estate tax rate from one thirteen to one seventeen per hundred-dollar valuation. As the treasurer stated, those bills will go out here in the next couple of days with that rate included. Increasing lodging taxes from eight to ten percent, adding the cigarette tax at the forty cent per pack, likely a January start. As we work through that, we'll see if we can get it done earlier. And then, we've talked about increasing stormwater fees to help fund stormwater projects and roads. On the utility side, regional water budget, we've talked about this, set to recover operating and capital costs, and I feel, I feel pretty good about that. We're also working to get the true-up, the whole true-up cycle done. We've had good discussions with all the partners, and we're going to come back with, okay, here's what this means in practical terms. Some of that, and I, we are going to talk about it for those in the finance committee a little tomorrow on the finance committee about where we are in the true-ups and what's going on. And then, of course, you know, Mayor Parton, Dr. Manker, and now our city attorney, new city attorney, will be, are also on the commission. And so, as we, so we'll be continually to work on those things. Sewer budget, we will need a rate increase. I've said this before, so, we're in the process of working with Dickey to identify some firms that might do that. When we get the new interim person on, talk to that person, to have them move forward on getting a study done and probably come back around mid-fiscal year with recommended rates for that. So, that's on the utility side. Again, the schools, the city contributions, we've set it at thirteen-seven, that includes that extra a hundred and thirty thousand. So, I want to make really clear that's, that's in there. For the, for the well program, for the youth program, whatever, that's, you know, generally the well program. Not all of what they asked for, but some of what some council members had a interest in doing when we met with the school, the school board as well. Okay, so, I just want to, I'm going to, I guess I'll circle back a little bit. We can go through this pretty quickly. The operating budget for regional water is eighteen point nine million. That, one of the things we did in looking at that, I think one of the things that was helpful, we looked back to twenty-eighteen, what was our actual spent, what are we budgeting now? And we broke it down by major category, and what's the average annual compounded increase in cost? And for, for staff, it was two and a half percent a year, right? You know, just a very reasonable, maybe too low of an increase, but that was the increase. And for everything, it was about seven and a half percent a year. Most of that driven by costs in utilities and, and chemicals and things of that nature. And the industry believed, from their experience, those were valid increases, and so, approved this. So, I think it's a very solid budget that is based on, you know, work Dickey and his staff did that is based on the actual needs and expenditures of this, and then same with the capital budget. So, then the debt service is a million, and so, I think we've, we've talked about a lot of this kind of stuff, but that seems to be going in a, in a, in a good direction. And I think, hopefully, once we get the true-ups done, the major issues that have been kind of hanging out there will be tied up. All right, so implementation of the budget. Once council approves and does the second reading, approves the ordinance finally, the budget goes into effect July one twenty-five, right? Obviously. Finance staff, they're going to prepare for the FY twenty-four, you know, budget rollovers, right? By unencumbering budgets, making sure that anything that's active is truly active. And we will, will roll those things over. We will also come back to you and report what we've rolled over. So it's not, it's not a surprise. It's in the record and you understand what we've done. And we, again, not going to roll over anything that has active contracts. So one of the concerns right now, as we roll something over, that, that will also take budget capacity, right? So we talk about what, what are we in the year with? It will include things that we roll over, that will set that aside. That the revenue will have to go with, right? The expense, because we're not getting new revenue, any more revenue next year in the budget other than what we had. And then we're going to publish, publish a budget book. And my, I'm going to make a commitment. It's going to be me and Michelle doing a lot of this with Ramonda's to have the budget book done by June thirtieth, before the start of the fiscal year. One of the issues been, we have Ramonda, one of the, Ramonda Carroll, who's our budget person, one of the hardest working people I've ever known, got it done last year in September. And not because, and, you know, she was working every day. So, so we're going to, we're going to jump in with her to help that and expand it and provide that before the start of the fiscal year. And then there's all the work of, you know, getting into our immune system and, and all the cleanup starting in the year. So it'd be very busy, summers are very busy times for the finance folks. And that is what I have, have for you. Happy to answer any questions.
Okay. Are there any questions from city council? All right, I don't see any lights. Is there any from online? Okay, here none?
Councilor Pellon.
Oh, Councilor Pellon?
Yeah, I have a question. The capital expenditure expenses that we voted on was one point six, correct? That we had, we had passed resolutions for? The capital projects that we had approved were based embedded in the fact that we had made resolutions prior to, and obligated money, matching money from the state of one point six.
Correct, yes.
So why, why are you recommend, why are you recommending two point one more made for expense? Capital expenses? We haven't even spoken about what projects they are.
Yeah, no, this is all the same projects we've talked about, no new projects. It was just that-
So how did, how did it get up to two point one then? Out of the general fund when we-
Yeah, no, it's actually gone down from about three million dollars, which was what I presented before. So there's the state monies, there's some, some specific VDOT monies, there's storms-
I know, I'm talking, I know all those monies, I can see this chart.
Yeah.
But particularly, we were only supposed to have, we had only approved one point six.
No, the one point six-
It went down for the overall total with the state and federal considerations. But it's gone up if you take two point one out of the general fund. Is that not correct?
No, it's not, it's not correct. We, with the one point six is the federal aid, VDOT, smart scale, one thousand or whatever that is. And that hasn't changed. Before, when we first came to you with this, the general fund, the general fund amount was two point, or three point, over three million dollars. That was the general fund contribution. It's gone down to two point one primarily because the expected revenue from cigarette tax is lower. So it's not gone up, it's gone down from what was presented to you before.
So we have proven everything that was on the capital expenditure sheet?
Yeah, and some, some of the projects that you saw from the last time got moved to the unexpended, but no projects got added in and no projects got switched out.
I guess, I guess I'd give it your blind to understand it, but-
Sure, yeah, I'd be happy to be with you.
Thank you.
Okay, is there anyone else that has any questions? Okay, go ahead and open up the public hearing. I don't have anyone signed up for this public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak? No, okay. Closing the public hearing. We'll have our final reading at our next city council meeting. Moving on to regular business, R one.
Mr. Mayor and members of city council, our economic development director is not here today. He had a family engagement, so I will present on his behalf. He is simply asking the council to adopt a resolution to form a committee for the Virginia American Revolution Two Fifty Commission.
Okay.
And appoint two counselors to that committee. I'm sorry, wrong, wrong R I. Yep.
Okay, Vice Mayor Gore?
Make the motion to approve the draft resolution to establish the Two Hundred Fifty Committee for Revolutionary. What is the title actually?
Virginia American Revolution Two Fifty Commission.
I move to approve the resolution to form a committee in support of the Virginia American-
Revolution Two Fifty Commission.
As amended, because there is an edit at the bottom of number three, remove Historic Hopewell Foundation and to appoint Charles Bennett and Christopher Ward to serve as staff representatives.
Do you want to include in there that Mr. Bennett is the lead and then Mr. Ward is the backup?
Correct, we didn't talk about that. And to designate Mr. Bennett as the lead representative on behalf of the city with Mr. Ward being the alternate next.
Okay, is there a second?
Second that.
Okay, motions been made by Vice Mayor Gore and seconded by Councilor Joyner. Discussion, Vice Mayor Gore?
If approved, Clerk's Office, please amend the TBR to add this as a list option for people to apply, share it in the city's newsletter and post it on our Facebook page. People can know there's an opportunity to apply for this.
Okay, is there any other discussion?
Would you repeat the motion?
Yeah, it's to approve this resolution with Historic Hopewell Foundation taken out and then appointing Mr. Bennett and Mr. Ward to the committee. And then Mr. Bennett is the lead and the backup lead or alternate is Mr. Ward. Basically, he's the, Mr. Bennett's the chair, Mr. Ward's vice chair. Okay, roll call?
Council Holloway? Council Joyner?
Yes.
Council Holloway? Council Harris?
Yes.
Mayor Parton?
Yes.
Council, Vice Mayor Gore?
Yes.
Council Denton?
No.
Council Pellon?
Yes.
Motion passes five to one.
I said yes.
Oh, sorry, didn't I hear you? Motion passes six to one.
Okay, R two, Mr. Campbell?
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members. The agenda item I'm up here for is the monthly fee increase for the solid waste collection. As of July first, twenty twenty-four, Central Virginia Waste Management, the City of Hopewell, begins service with vendor waste management to provide solid waste collection service. The recommendation is that city council approve an increase in the monthly service rate by seven seventy-two per customer. Authorize the city manager to sign amended agreement removing Petersburg from the service agreement for municipal solid waste collection and disposal services. The collection rates for city customers for solid waste collection shall be thirty dollars and ninety-one cents a month for residential service and thirty-four dollars and thirty-two cents a month for commercial service. This fee shall be effective July first, twenty twenty-four. Timing and background, the new service for contracts for solid waste obviously go into effect July first. The contracts are included in the approved budget, well, the, the budget for FY twenty-five. And the cost for solid waste collection and disposal services have increased substantially over the years. So we, we need the new rate in order not to dip into the general fund. Basically, the, to fund this program and no additional debit to the general fund in the city.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve the monthly fee increase for the solid waste collection as presented?
Some.
Okay, motion's been made by Council Joyner and seconded by Council Denton. Is there any discussion? Seeing no lights, roll call please.
Council Holloway?
Hello?
Council Joyner?
Yes.
Council Harris?
Yes.
Mayor Parton?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Gore? Vice Mayor Gore?
No.
Council Denton?
Yes.
Council Pellon?
Yes.
Motion passes five to two.
Thank you.
Uh, R three?
Mr. Mayor, sorry for the confusion earlier. This is the actual R item where Mr. Bennett, the Economic Development Director, is requesting that city council appoint two members to the Economic Development Strategic Plan. He needs that to be able to develop the plan that council has requested that he deliver by June the fourteenth.
Okay, Vice Mayor Gore?
Um, I know I volunteered to serve on this. I can't remember the other person who volunteered. I don't know if it was Council Joyner, right?
I'd like to, I'd like to serve.
I don't recall anybody else saying they wanted to do it, right?
I don't, I didn't get anybody.
Okay, make the motion to appoint Vice Mayor Gore and Council Joyner to serve as the council representatives on the Economic Development Strategic Plan Committee.
I can second that.
Okay, motion's on the floor, made by Vice Mayor Gore and seconded by Council Joyner. Is there any discussion?
Yeah, yes, Mayor, can you state the motion again?
Yes, it's to appoint Vice Mayor Gore and Council Joyner to the Economic Development Strategic Plan- Committee.
Okay.
All right, seeing no lights, roll call please.
Council Holloway? Council Holloway?
Yeah, yes.
Council Joyner?
Yes.
Council Harris?
Yes.
Mayor Parton?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Gore?
Yes.
Council Denton?
Yes.
Council Pellon?
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Okay, report to the city manager.
Mr. Mayor and members of city council, tonight we have a presentation over the collective bargaining and the impact of that information to the city. As, as you know, I am not asking for any action tonight. This is a presentation where I've been required to report back with, within a hundred and twenty days. So that deadline was April the fourteenth. And so to report back to council of this information, you were provided in an email, a memo in addition to this presentation. I'd just like to start by saying that Cynthia Hudson has, we have had regular meetings with the previous attorney with drafting this ordinance, what you have in your packet tonight. You have the ordinance and those areas that are highlighted in yellow are the changes that were made to the ordinance. They're basically additional language added to the ordinance. I've also provided you with the resolution from November the fourteenth, twenty twenty-three that indicated the directness to the city manager, which is one, to provide a fiscal impact study and in the framework. Number two, to provide it within a hundred and twenty days. And then, and then number three, to complete the ordinance and the new language for your review with that. So the presentation is pretty short. We've had it for some time, so I'm not going to take a lot of time to go through the information. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer that towards the end. So on page one, you will notice I provided the Virginia Code, which gives the cities or municipalities the, the new law that will allow collective bargaining into their community. Page two, it indicates that you must, as a city and as a city council, you must develop an ordinance and outline the details in the ordinance. And so that is what you see here in those highlighted areas that the attorney, the previous attorney, Mr. Mrs. Hudson and myself, along with other departments, we did take the time to visit with the PBA and, and talk with them as well. We met with Ben Rupert, who is the fire chief, to also gain some perspective from him as well. That was our committee. And so we began with going through the ordinance word by word and, and making some recommendations for council to consider. On page, I think I'm going faster than talking. So on page four, you have the definitions. This is where we start and this is really important. We talk about what is collective bargaining, identifying the, the employees in this ordinance who will not have the opportunity to collective bargaining. And then also what it looks like when we reach an impasse, a lockout, mediation and/or a strike, which is not applicable here in the city. But more importantly, on page five, to be eligible to bargain, there are certain people who cannot. And so again, constitutional officers, managerial employees, supervisors and confidential employees, that those are people like the attorney office, HR-
Can you give us the slide number that you're going on?
I'm on slide number five at this time.
What, what is the header of that?
Staffing requirements?
Ineligible to bargain, those who are ineligible to bargain. Here, page five.
Content overview? Right here, yeah, ordinance content overview. Or is that up here?
She's, she's just not struggling.
What is the page?
But you're on, but you're on the right page.
I'm on the right page, but we need to go back.
We need to go back some. Go back another-
One more.
Go back another, there you go.
Here you go.
Okay. So those who cannot bargain are constitutional officers, those with managerial responsibilities, supervisory, confidential employees. Those are attorneys, human resources, the city manager, the, the clerk, temporary staff, those that are in probation and then interns and employees. And so we have meet and confer, which is an interesting concept and this is part of the recommendation here at the end. But those employees who cannot bargain or do not have the ability to bargain, enter into what is considered a meet and confer. And this allow those who are unable to bargain to actually meet with the city- And this allow those who are unable to bargain to actually um, meet with the City Council, meet with the City Manager to also discuss um, bargaining topics, wages and, and, and other things that are offered to um, the other employees. It's also recommended because as employees are able to bargain, the supervisors and the managerial staff also have to maintain a certain level of distance in salary between the, the staff and those who they manage. And so on page seven, we're moving into the infrastructure framework and cost requirements. As we sat down with the group, um, we, we met with a lot of people throughout the state. And so we thought it would be helpful to um, show the Council, uh, you know, before we really get into the framework of what our city demographics look like. Twenty, you know, from twenty twenty to twenty twenty two, our population have not changed. Somewhere between twenty thousand to twenty three thousand. Today in twenty twenty four, we're at twenty two nine sixty two. And this, um, this information comes from the census and it was from twenty twenty two. So, that, that gives you some reference, um, framework reference of how old this data is. And so simply, I'll just go through it. It says there are persons under eighteen, there's twenty five percent here in this city. Um, and so, you know, Ms. Pelham likes the numbers, so I did this for her particularly. So there's five thousand eight hundred and seventy eight individuals. And they are not contributing to the tax base because they're under age. The median household income is fifty thousand. Those who are dis- dis- uh, disabled, eleven percent, which is twenty six hundred roughly. And there's nine thousand rooftops here in the city. Individual property, um, um, home ownership and companies, this also include companies too. We're looking at sixty four hundred. It took a long time to get this information, uh, between the real estate and the um, um, Department of Development. And um, I was really surprised that it was this low. Uh, but that, that gives you an idea of, of the tax base here. Those who are in poverty actually came from the census and it's twenty one percent. And then the, I combined the subsidized and unsubsidized residents, we're sitting at eight point seven percent. So if you take twenty two thousand and you subtract the twenty one percent, which is those in poverty and you subtract the, those that are under eighteen, you're looking at twelve thousand one hundred and ninety four individuals. That is your tax base. So, as we go into this conversation, and we're looking at the framework here for implementing collective bargaining into the city. I, I had quite a few lessons learned um, that a lot of people wanted to share. And unfortunately, I can't give you the city's names. A lot of them don't want to be recognized. But if you'd like to talk to me offline about some conversations, I'd be happy to do that with you. Almost all of, so the left column here on page. Page am I on? Nine, staffing requirements. You see, we currently have a HR Director. Our HR staff consists of three people. That's the HR Director, the Administrator and the Generalist. Uh, technically four. We have a Risk Manager who is part-time. Uh, we have a City Attorney and we have a Paralegal. Almost every locality that I spoke to had to add additional staff to handle collective bargaining. Our nearby neighbors, I would, I would just say Central Virginia, um, had to add a Deputy City Attorney. Um, they also added a Labor's M- uh, Manager to the um, HR staff. And they also added a Specialist. And then we, uh, speaking with uh, the Finance Director, who has a lot of experience in uh, budgeting for uh, collective bargaining. You know, his comments were, you know, now we have to have someone to actually manage and prepare reports and, and, and someone that's just dedicated to the financial piece of collective bargaining. So that's where you get the new internal staff. The recommended staff was the LRA, so that's, that's a given. We have to have a non-partisan person who is going to be um, instituting all the requirements that comes. And then the um, Attorney Firm, um, again, almost everyone has a, a, a external Attorney Firm, someone who um, is specialized in collective bargaining and, and that can be there throughout the process. Page ten, the cost of administration. So we looked at a lot of salaries, um, to try to come up what would be the best, looking at those who also have collective bargaining in place. And this is the range across the state for the new City Attorney, the Labor's Officer, the Specialist, the new Budgeting and Reporting Analyst, the, the LRA and the Attorney. And we tried to make some assumptions based on how many days out of the year they would work or hours. The LRA, their cost is on, you know, a daily basis. So, um, I did not find a company that you can just hire someone as needed. The cost of administration. Page eleven. There's a fifty fifty share once you reach mediation. And so that's an additional cost between one to two thousand dollars a day. The co- when you cannot agree and you reach an impasse, um, it moves over to arbitration. Now arbitration could cost anywhere between sixty five hundred and eight thousand dollars. And that's also a fifty fifty share between um, both entities. In this case, it would be the city and the bargaining unit. I will, also want to point out that um, as I heard Council's desires last year, there was a desire to include all employees and not just the Police Department. And so it was pointed out to me today that it may have not been so clear when I was questioning about the administrative estimate here. And I just want to make sure that I make clear that this one point three to one point five additional includes all of the employees. That's the estimate for all employees, not just police. So that puts things in perspective. As I was doing a lot of research over the last past couple of months, I came across an article that um, that I, that I thought was interesting because I, you know, I wasn't considering the impact of collective bargaining on our credit rating. And so I reached out to Mister Sanderson, who, and, 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 you know, we began talking about this letter and Lord and behold, he said, I the one wrote that letter for that Northern Virginia um, company. And so I've invited him here today because there are some questions that I know that you may have that are specific to how this plays into our credit rating. And um, once we complete the presentation, I will yield the floor over to him to um, kind of take your questions um, on that issue. So as I wrap up the presentation, I just wanted to share with you some lessons learned from this research. Um, and this is just a compiled of, I compiled a lot of um, information that I received from those municipalities that, that instituted collective bargaining. And they wanted to share the good, the bad and the ugly. And so my internal team decided, okay, this is the approach that we would take in order to lessen the cost burden on the city. And so number one, do not implement all bargaining units at once. Consider a phased approach to help manage the administrative costs. Complete a fiscal health and salary class and compensation study before implementation. This is particularly important, um, you know, because staff has asked for a class in, 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 um, compensation study. One particular um, um, municipality that, that I talked to, they said that their council went into this situation, they did not have a class and comp study. They knew that they were a little bit on the lower end of things. But at the same time that this was adopted, they had to go and do a class and comp study because the collective bargaining agencies was coming with, coming to them with these astronomical um, salaries and they just, you know, was overwhelmed. So at the same time, they had to go and do a class and st- uh, comp study so they could see where they should be before they go to bargain with the, with the agency. So for us, you know, in the internal group, we thought that, okay, maybe we should take a step back. This is important. We need to have something in our back pockets when we go to go and, and negotiate. So we know what we can do, where we need to be. One thing we should consider too is what are we planning to bargain? Uh, is it just salary and wages? Or are we considering all other forms of monetary compensation? So this is a discussing, discussion that Council needs to have. So other forms of com- compensation consist of bonuses, raises, overtime, cost of living, sign-on bonus, bonus, shift differential pay, tuition reimbursement, 401K match options, retention bonus and relocation and professional development stipend. The fourth thing here we want to consider is maybe um, in the past, we had a step pa- plan um, in two thousand eight, um, that was disbanded. And so we felt that uh, every employee knowing where they are in the um, salary range was important. And it's actually the easiest for Council to, uh, Council and the Finance Department to give you an accurate number of what you think your um, cost would be on a, um, year-to-year fiscal basis. So that's a recommendation as well. Um, this one was kind of important. I thought it was fascinating that one person or one municipality i- indicated that educate the public and the workforce before collective bargaining, uh, before your ordinance approval. Several municipalities indicated that there was a sense of loss of power. There was resentment between employees, tension between department heads. Um, and so this is, uh, that was a, a lesson learned for that particular municipality. Actually, quite a few municipalities and they thought it was important to share with me that before you consider this, that everyone needed to be educated on what would, what would happen next. And then the last one here says, ensure that Councilors understand the impact of collective bargaining. You know. One municipality said that they're that they had to raise the taxes, they had a twenty two million dollar surplus and they had to raise the taxes to get an additional six point four million dollars. And this really sent the councils over the edge. And so, um, they actually um, offered to come down to speak to our council about things that they should consider um, when uh, instituting um, things like this. And then lastly, ensure that your HR manual is up to date with current rules and policies. Um, any loopholes from, from uh, the discussions that I've had, any loopholes will be taken advantage of um, in, in this process. So invest the money and time to ensure that your policies are up to date. And so here are the recommendations, if Council so choose. Recommendations are that the city consider, and, and I've met with at least three municipalities who have not adopted collective bargaining, but what they have adopted was what is considered meet and confer process. And it's an interesting process. It is essentially collective bargaining, but it's internal. And the um, goal of this is to take out the middleman um, in this process, that Council develop a ordinance to meet the employees where they are, speak to them about the issues that they have, that they see, that they, you know, uh, talk about their work, workplace conditions and commit to, on a um, yearly basis to helping meet some of those challenges. And so, uh, we can reduce that one point three million dollar cost if, if, if Council had some kind of and, and this works well with, with one of the um, municipalities in, in the Hampton Roads area. And so the meet and confer rules, you actually can upgrade from there. Um, if you, you know, under, get an understanding of the process, learn how it works in a couple of years. You say, hey, you know, this is working fine, let's move forward to that. Um, co- co- go ahead and complete that salary study and then um, create a resolution to revisit collective bargaining in twenty twenty seven. But only contingent that we institute the meet and confer uh, process. So the internal staff and myself are making this recommendation. Here are some of the reasons for that recommendation. One is because we're in this fiscal stre- distressed posture in the city. And so it's not advisable that we institute a collective bargaining process that will add additional cost to the budget, i.e. salaries. I would not recommend having taxes to pay additional salaries. Collective bargaining would, would, and I should have listed here, and this is a mistake, re- require possible tax increase on ci- citizens for a yearly compounding administrative cost. And administrative costs are just purely salaries and all forms of other monetary costs. And then number three is because we have not yet achieved um, saving or having an economic reserve of six point nine percent of total annual budget. And so um, any, this is um, collective bargaining is considered increasingly risky when we do not have a healthy savings account. So with that said, I will invite Mister Sanderson to the podium to um, express his thoughts on how collective bargaining may impact our credit rating.
Good evening, Council. Jimmy Sanderson with Dab Morton Company, Financial Advisor to the City. Um, I, I believe that, Dr. Manker, they have a memo that I, that I wrote. Uh, maybe just a few um, thoughts uh, for you and, and, and folks listening. I think that uh, what Dr. Manker pointed out was a very good summary of the impacts of, of collective bargaining on local governments. The, the entity that she referenced, that she found, um, that had made some comments right when the General Assembly passed this, uh, was the City of Alexandria, um, who, who did adopt collective bargaining. And my comments to them were that the radio agencies at time, and that was, this was based on conversations with them, would not see it as a credit positive for them. Now, they're a triple A rated locality, very strong financials. They chose to move forward. And it hasn't uh, hurt their credit rating. They're still a triple A rated locality. I think we're in a, in a bit of a different position. The main um, concern that radio agencies have with collective bargaining is the flexibility impact that, that it puts on local governments. And Dr. Manker pointed out, one of the things that I, that I pointed out also in my memo, was this the financial impact, uh, the direct financial impact of, of the cost of implementing it, bringing in extra staff. It may, may um, uh, it may cost the city extra dollars. I think where Hopewell is in a little bit of a different position, um, is we don't have our credit ratings back yet, right? So we're gonna be in a position of going back to the radio agencies and arguing to. get our credit ratings back in a good place. Um, and this in my mind just adds one more cloud of, of that flexibility that you may have. Um, again, I can't, I can't stand up here and tell you that it would automatically mean you didn't get a certain rating or not, but they are absolutely going to look at it as, um, a, a hindrance to your flexibility and your ability to, um, uh, make decisions going forward. I mean, you have certain things in your budget that are, uh, just paramount that you have to pay, debt service. Um, and if you look at it, but you'll see that salaries is a large part, um, uh, of your, of your annual expenses. Um, and again, this may, may impact that a little bit. I, I would, I would just suggest that as you think through this, that, um, as we start to reengage with the rating agencies, this, this certainly is going to be something that they're going to ask questions about. And the last point is it is absolutely going to, going to cost us extra dollars to implement that, um, you know, without knowing, uh, exactly how our financials are going to be, uh, are going to play out in these, these later fiscal years. Um, you know, preserving that fund balance, which is a big part of the rating agencies' uh, comfort level with your reserves is something that we want to try to preserve as much as we can as well. So, um, Mr. Mayor, happy to answer any questions, but, uh, I think that, that sort of sets it out a little bit for you.
Uh, I saw Mr. Harris's hand online.
Yes, I have one question in regards to, uh, of the, the impact of, uh, collective bargaining on our bond rating. Can, can, can you explain to me how indeed the, uh, the introduction of collective bargaining will impact our bond rating?
Yes, sir. Um, a- again, it's, it's predominantly the, the lack of flexibility that you may have in future budgets because you have bargained away part of that, uh, part of that flexibility with your contracts that you would enter into with, uh, whichever various, uh, uh, parts of your, your city employees that you may do that with. So, so again, it's the flexibility side. If there were something that you needed to cut that budget, that may be an area that you are unable to reduce your, your budget, uh, because you have a revenue shortfall or expenditures are rising. And, and in the normal course, you would look at all of your budget to make some cuts if you had to. And, uh, through collective bargaining, that may limit your ability to make those, those necessary cuts. And, and your other option is to simply, uh, cut the rest of the budget even more or raise, uh, raise revenues from others, from other source.
Well, the, the reason why I'm asking that is because, because there's a multitude of factors that can impact a bond rating for us in our jurisdiction, right? It seems like to me that the only one that's being highlighted right now, and it doesn't really, uh, take a, a real deep cut that we know of in regards to how it impacts the, uh, the bond rating. Uh, what about some of the other factors that you're dealing with other than what collective bargaining?
Yeah, and, and let me make clear, you're, you're, you're exactly right. I, I am in no way saying, uh, um, and if I didn't say it clearly before, I'll say it again, that collective bargaining by adopting that ordinance and entering into collective bargaining, that that's going to result in a lower rating. Again, I gave an example of the city of Alexandria who did enter into collective bargaining with, uh, their employees and they maintained their triple A rating. My, my only point was we're in a different position than them and that we're trying to reengage our, uh, our credit rating. And I'm just, just, uh, suggesting that that, that collective bargaining ordinance is going to be seen by the rating agencies as providing less flexibility to the city of Hope Well. Whether that translates to a lower credit rating or not, that I can't tell you one way or the other, but it is going to be looked upon as a, as a credit negative, uh, uh, and not what we currently have, which is a, is a credit positive in Virginia for those entities that haven't adopted collective bargaining.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Any other questions from city council? Okay. All right. Thank you, Mr. Sanderson.
Yes, Vice Mayor, thank you.
Yes, yes.
Oh, uh, Councilor Palam?
Yes. Anyway, well, in, in light of the fact that I think, uh, uh, our budget is, is always, we always struggling to make budget and make decisions to raise taxes on the citizens. Uh, I, I would not agree with collective bargaining right now unless there is a referendum or something on it so the citizens can decide if they want to pay extra taxes just for, for this, it sounds to be cumbersome, uh, amount. And, uh, in the, in the presentation, you indicated one of the slides had something about, uh, two thousand, um, hours. Is that per person correct? That's like a fifty-week work week, right? So the, the people that you recommend actually will be just full-time people.
Right. The, the hours is based on a year of service. It doesn't, they, they don't have to complete the two thousand hours consec- consecutively. They just, it's just two thousand hours, um, is what we...
Yeah, I figured that was, okay, that's fifty weeks. So they just full-time employees. So the, the staffing that you gave us, you included what we have now and the only additional ones for HR would be two people, correct?
Two people and then a, and then, and then a deputy attorney.
Attorney, would that attorney work for HR or would it be in the, uh, legal?
It would work for the, the, the lead attorney and that person would focus strictly on collective bargaining for throughout all the bargaining units.
And that's the only thing that person would do?
Yes.
And after, after the bargaining is over for that short period, what'd they do for the rest of the year?
Well, bargaining can continue throughout the year. There are, there would be grievances that they would need to, um, be, you know, there for. Um, I can, I can talk to you offline with what other, the other municipalities have their deputy, um, involved in and is, is extensive.
I mean, I mean, you can make, I mean, whatever you do, you can present it as the public.
Okay. I can, I can bring it back to you.
Yeah, they want to know too. Okay, uh, so I'm not willing, willing to raise taxes again for anything right now, so...
So this is not a request?
I know, I know, I know, but when it comes up, just, uh, unless something happens, my feeling won't change.
The, 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 um, resolution that you currently have in place indicates that once the Bob group has completed their work here, then you will, um, make a decision at that time. And so that is the path that we're on. However, it begins the conversation for us to consider this if we would like to, um, be ready, uh, for when the Robert Bob is completed.
All right, thank you.
Uh, Vice Mayor Gore and then Councilor Joyner.
I'm sorry, I actually had a question for you. Um, in, in regards to even the state of Alexandria, I Googled their budget. Their budget is nine hundred twenty-six million dollars for operating. Dr. Manker, how much is our operating budget? Miss got finished talking about?
Sixty-seven.
Sixty-seven million. Their operating budget is nine hundred, almost a billion dollars. And so it's no comparison.
Right.
Their school's budget is two hundred and fifty-eight million dollars. Ours is thirteen, or was it thirteen?
No.
Eleven.
No, that's what we give them. Their overall budget is like seventy-four.
Okay. What we give is thirteen. So, um, you know, I raised these concerns before, um, but there was this push to, to do this and luckily it kind of slowed down when people started really thinking about the impact and allowed us to have a vote to have a review of this. Um, because at first it was about just flat out be adopted until we had enough votes to say, let's study this and get some recommendations on the table. Um, from my research, I've seen that the jurisdictions that have passed this, mostly northern Virginia, a handful maybe in Tidewater. And is there any that you know of in central Virginia?
Yes, two. Richmond, it's two.
Charlottesville and Richmond.
Richmond.
Richmond, it's a different animal.
That's also close to, but, close to a billion dollar budget too.
Close to a billion dollar budget as well, this was a different. So of the, of those localities that from your knowledge, there is there, there's none that I can find that are even comparable jurisdiction in terms of size, operating budget, even how we're structured.
Not that I, not that I work with, no ma'am.
So, I mean, we're almost would be the example or guinea pig, so to speak, in regards to this. Um, and that's the impact, is, is the financial impact. So I make this rhyme. Um, the cost that you've seen roughly to operate, um, do you think that that's sustainable for us? Let's say we get our audits, we get our audits caught up, have this vis- conversation, um, with where we are in our ability to raise capital to meet our operating needs. Was you say, even if we got this caught up, but this is something we should consider or we wait some time?
So maybe the way to, maybe the way to think about it and for citizens too, and I, and I don't know this number, and maybe you did it because you just rate, you just went through the real estate tax, the value, what's the value of one penny of your real estate tax now?
One twenty, one thirty.
How much is it, a hundred and twenty thousand dollars, right? So it's, if it, if it's going to cost you annually over a million dollars, right, to implement this, that's ten cents on your tax rate. So you'd have, either have to come up with, you'd either have to cut, cut your existing expenses in some way, or you'd have to raise what's the equivalent of ten cents on your real estate tax rate to come up with, um, one point two million dollars.
And is that, but that's just for right now, like, wouldn't it be an exponential increase because over time there's going to have to be increases?
That's right.
It's sustaining, right?
If the value, if the, if the value of your penny, right, doesn't grow at the same rate as the cost of implementing and maintaining the collective bargaining, it would have to increase, that's correct.
Okay. In general, your overall, I got your, your overall recommendation is to break in like knots.
Well, I, I certainly think in the position that we're in, um, that, that there's just, there's not a lot of facts for me to look at on the financial, from a financial perspective. Um, and I think going to the rating agencies when we can and having this uncertainty, uh, how this may impact us isn't going to help the argument, um, that we are going to have flexibility and we're going to meet, be able to, to meet budgets going forward without, you know, again, either cutting services or increasing, increasing taxes to, to increase revenues.
Thank you. Um, appreciate you staying late. Sorry about the last meeting.
That's okay.
And thank you for your guidance.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, Dr. Manker, I do have a, a observation slash question for you. Thank you. In terms of, on your first slide, when you talked about staff, I think there's a point and part to consider, um, I think, uh, they can go back to that, I think it was called, um, confidential employees or something, how does you word it?
Confidential employees. Those are employees that, um, maintain, um, confidential, I, I mean, they're employees that work with other employees that have access to personnel records.
Right. Unbuns.
Yes.
Yeah, so I mean, I would question, I mean, just, we don't have to get into the weeds with this, but I would even question like, put attorney up there, attorney is appointee, not employee.
Well, I think these confer, thi- this comes from the Virginia code too. They outline who cannot, so that, that attorney was one of those individuals.
Right. But I, I, but my point I'm trying to make is, um, I, I wonder what that impacts on our appointees office, right? Um, because one, the city clerk, city manager, city attorney appointees of council. The paralegal is an employee of the attorney's office, not a city employee, neither is a deputy clerk. It is appointee of council by through, through way of you. So by default, they're not even covered in this. So we say employees, they're not even considered because they're not really appointees. Um, so that's one part to consider. Um, one can appointee be, be a part of this and then two, their staff. But the other part of that equation is I just also want to make, because to Councilor Palam's question slash point, attorney's office really, there's a conversation that we would have to make if we decide before how that works because there's only one attorney that we have in the city, is the city attorney. And by charter, the city attorney is a chief legal advisor to council and a chief administrator off, and, and to the chief administrator officer. As designated by council, the city attorney also shall serve as a chief legal advisor to other departments, boards, and commissions and agencies of the city in matters affecting the city's interests. So I've always said this before, I think people conflate this. The city attorney is the city council's attorney and the city manager's attorney. Um, that's it. We allow the attorney to support departments. Um, so that would be a conversation that we would need to have about legal representation across the board because if all legal representation flows to that appointee, how, uh, legal representation is for this needs to be a discussion on that office and then how it flows through council. Uh, I don't think we can make an assumption that we'll have deputies not, you know, and then even that goes to HR, not HR, that's a whole nother conversation that we haven't even opened up that can of worms and how that falls and have strong concerns about what that will look like. And that's why I think there needs to be more discussion even on the, the legal aspect of how, um, we will support, um, the grievances and some other legal matters because that's a whole nother, um, aperture that will open up. And I think that we haven't even thought through that. They looked at the HR ones, but not the actual legal practice part. So, um, yeah, and we're having a hard time even, thank you for your service, uh, recruiting for a city attorney, I would imagine, um, having to recruit for more attorneys for this. Um, so thank you for this research, but I just want to make sure you don't forget those two points and even, um, if council decides to move forward for us to, to dive into that part as well, the, our appointees, their staff, and then the legal part. But thank you for the thorough research.
All right, uh, Councilor Joyner and then Councilor Denton.
Sure. Um, I appreciate all the research that's gone into this and we're clearly not in a position at this point in time to consider, you know, a lot of things have changed in a matter of a few months in terms of where we are, where we know we are right now. And this number, this sixteen point nine percent of the total annual budget being in a reserve, that is a, that's a really important number. Um, we are nowhere near that goal. Um, um, I read earlier that we're, you know, have serious cash flow issues, that sort of thing. Um, one of the recommendations here is that we revisit collective bargaining in fiscal year twenty twenty-seven. Um, you know, I, obviously we've decided to look at it when the Bob group is through and maybe that is a good thing to do, but, um, I think that, um, you know, we're, we're a few years away from collective bargaining, uh, simply because of our financial situation. Um, now, you know, with that being said, um, economic development can make a huge difference. And, um, we have some things going for us, um, but we're, we're a few years away from even getting a bond rating under the best of circumstances. So I think we have to, we have to proceed carefully with this. Um, I don't think we throw the baby out with the bathwater, but, um, um, I think we do have to be very prudent, very strategic in the way we move forward with this.
Okay. Uh, Councilor Denton?
I would just like to thank the city manager for, for this information, very helpful. And I do agree with Councilor Joyner that a lot has changed since we first started looking at this. And I feel like the important thing that we, once we've, and we are turning around and we're going in the right direction, I think, I believe that. But I think to help us get into this, we are definitely going to need a salary and compensation report. With, it has been so long since the city has had one. We don't know what we're competing with in neighboring jurisdictions. So I feel like we've, we've got to have that before we can get serious. I, I don't like the word fiscal distress, um, but we've gotten kind of used to that over the past year. And until we get out of that and we get this bond rating back, Mr. Sanderson, we need that bond rating back. Uh, and our city get, is strong, then, then I think we, we could certainly move in this direction. But a lot has happened. We know a lot more than we... We know a lot more than we did a year ago. So, that's where I stand on this right now. I'm not sure 2027 is going to do it, but, you know, we don't know yet. That's it.
Okay. Moving on. CCR one, Vice Mayor Gore.
Yeah, I'll just keep this quick and brief. Basically, I'm just seeking to see if we can adjust the Keep Hope Beautiful Committee's char- charge to look at environmental factors. I will actually just defer this to the next, no, I'll just keep it. I talked to Director Ward. Would like for the group, instead of just picking up trash, to look at environmental hazards that we have going on, whether it's DQ complaints, EPA violations in the city, and to help make recommendations in terms of, one, if they're closing out the items, looking at the recommendation in terms of law with staff to figure out if there's ways that we can help impose some type of regulations in regards to air emissions and some other environmental factors. But really help us chronicle to see where we are in terms of parties in the city when it comes to citations and how is that impacting residents' health? Director Ward said he would actually prefer that the department handle the ask and to report back on a quarterly basis or whatever system that we prefer. We see, would question, will we get the yield of information I'm seeking from it being with a boarding commission? So, I said I would share that information with council to see how you would like to proceed. From my understanding, I think he said he really wasn't opposed to the thought process and what I was trying to go to. He felt like that fell under their purview and it's something they should be looking at anyways regarding our health chapter and comprehensive plan and some of the things they're looking at in general. So, he felt like it was something that they would want to take on as well. So, in regards to this, seeing where people kind of fall or thought processes are, and again, to try to get a snapshot of all the violations that we have, not with just the city, but partners in the city and the statuses of those citations.
Okay. Councilor Joyner, Denton, and then myself.
Yeah. I mean, I think it's, these are all very important things that we need to be tracking, but I don't think it's appropriate to put it on a commission of volunteers. Secondly, in, in terms of tracking these violations, I think that needs to be the Office of Emergency Management. I think some of that needs to go to that particular group. And, you know, they have, they interface constantly. They have meetings every month with the industry partners, and perhaps their role could be expanded. If there is an emergency, if there's an emission or whatever, they're the ones that notify everyone. It would seem to me that it would fall into this. I mean, I do think it's, I think to, to bring this to the floor is important, that somebody needs to be looking at it.
So, I mean, I'll change my ass. I'd like to see, I'm fine with being open to this, but I see it being a part of planning too. So, can we ask Dr. Manker if council's open to this? Between the two departments, which one they recommend to help tackle this? They might say, make sure the two, they might say emergency management.
It's really important. I think it's very important. I think it's ve- I mean, you know, I think that, that's it.
We can, yeah.
I'm fine with that.
Uh, Councilor Denton?
Um, yeah, I think this is important, but I'd like to ask the Vice Mayor, could we wait till the August meeting after you and I go to the meeting in July and meet with the Keep Hope Beautiful, Keep Hope Beautiful Committee to see if they're attuned to this?
Um, we can, but ultimately, what kind of came out of that is staff was suggesting that it don't go to the committee, that they would like to do it themselves. And so, Development reached out to me and said, hey, instead of having the committee do it, can we do it? We think you'll have a better product.
So, you've talked with them and they're, they're for this?
Yeah, they called me and, and we staffed, staffed it.
But, but, but the committee itself has no...
So, I think you're getting confused still. Staff called me.
I would...
Staff, staff called me and said, hey, I see the request.
Right.
We, we recommend that the department do it, not the committee.
Okay. But I'm just saying, because we're meeting, you and I, are meeting with the Keep Hope Well Beautiful in July, would not be a good time to discuss it with them? Because I can tell you, it's hard to get volunteers. And some of this sounds almost like an employee.
Well, that, that's what I'm saying.
Yeah, I know, but I'm saying...
So, there's no need to talk about this with them.
It's not...
It's a no...
I think it's above and beyond. I, I, I'm...
We, I've already said that in my presentation. So, my recommendation was to allow staff to do it because that's what they asked for.
I would feel better talking to the, to the committee.
Yeah, I don't, I don't have a need to talk to them at this point. That's what I'm trying to say. What the, the need is to see whether it's the staff office that contacted me, AKA Development, or either emergency management, that would need to take this on. No, no need to involve KHB for this at all.
I'm just, that's just me. I've just, if, if somebody was making plans about the committee I was on, I'd like to know about it.
But we're not making plans. But, but we're not. But then also, let's not confuse the fact that it's our char- charge to make committees inside what they do. And it's up to people to want to still serve on them or not serve on them. I think that's partially the issue that I'm trying to address here. But even said, that's not the point right now. The point is, is everyone okay with asking the city manager to check with Development or Emergency Management to see who would like to work on this or a combination of, I already said with Development relates me, but the point was made that it might fall better under another department. So, to just inquire, is anyone objecting that?
That was all I was going to recommend.
Well, I think for like, to finish.
All right. Motion to adjourn. Taking over from me, so.
So, is there a motion to adjourn?
Yes.
Okay. Oh, well, meeting already ends.
There's no one against that online?
Is that, anyone against it online?
I'm not.
Okay, thank you. Motion to adjourn.
All right. Meeting has officially adjourned.
Oh, yeah, that's...